You may not recognise this place if you were in this room yesterday. So before, I was all the way over there. So I'm gonna show you a little thing that I've been working on. I have decided to separate. And I built a bridge, first of all. And I built a house. Now, this is typically my style, that would be the house. It also has like... Oh, there's so many people! Now, this is your little contraption, if we go up here. I will show you just how... How to do this, so... Move that, put some stone in there, it disappears. We go down, to the furnace. It does this thing. It smelts, even. And it goes down into here. So that way, I can have multiple things in the waiting line to smelt at once, and I don't have to be here for when it happens. I am really proud of myself for doing this. Okay. Also, if you can hear my keyboard, I apologise. But yeah, I built this bridge. There wasn't a hole here before. There absolutely was not a hole here before. Someone messed up my bridge. Oh, I'm gonna find out who. Okay, so I was working on building this bridge, but there's now a massive hole in it. Thank you! End of minute boat!
I have a lot of cobblestone from digging. Oh, by the way, do you wanna see my hole?
Excuse me?
My hole? I made a hole down to bedrock.
I mean, as long as you don't push me down the hole.
I'm not gonna push you down the hole, there's water, okay?
What?! When was this dug out?
Uh, it took me like, maybe like half an hour to an hour.
There's iron.
Yeah, I know, there's a lot of iron. I just didn't wanna ruin the aesthetic, you know? Like, there's just a chunk missing. It's actually not a chunk, it's less than a chunk, still. I don't know what to use it for, though, I just dug it, you know? I just made it, I don't... I don't know what-
I'm still wondering how the heck it took you half an hour to an hour to dig down to bedrock?
It wasn't that far, okay? Did somebody fall to death or something? No. We're just... We're in a hole, just standing here.
Starting here, and going like, round. So starting here, ending with Bunny. Give me all, give me your names, one at a time, come on.
Saturn.
And Maggie.
Ori.
I'm Alec.
I'm Alessia.
Aiden.
Snuggles.
Hi, I'm Lou.
Candy?
Jado.
Kenzie? Alright, and then we've got...
Oh, hi.
Hello? You're the only one not in the cross.
I'm Ray.
Ray? Sorry, Ray. It's because we've talked so much, anyway, it says... Because we've had conversations. Uh, anyway, for any of you who don't know me, uh, you can call me Snugga or Sunset, I reply to either. Uh, yeah, I don't know what's going on. Uh, I don't remember anything, really. Uh, except my name, I remember that. But yeah, so... That's, that's the life we're living, guys. Uh, I don't know why none of us remember anything, kinda strange, but... What can you do? Does anyone have any ideas for what to name the town? Because we've kinda had to start a community ourselves, because none of us remember the communities we're from, so... No memory. We're down with the Time Chip. Wow, I like them, they're very... These are good names, you guys were mine. Aiden, I thank you, won that competition.
Hi, one, one, one of the voices in my head just said, um, just said Le Womanberg?
Le Womanberg! We've got quite a few, we've got quite a mixture here, though. Time Chip? I like that, who came up with that? There was quite a lot of hands up for that, actually, there was quite a few hands up. I, I think, I think Time Chip won, how do people feel about that?
That one's not terrible, I like that one.
Yeah, yeah, we can go with that.
I, I kinda like the ending on it, because the ending is, on it is generic, like for sure.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't like it.
Chip, okay, yeah?
Yeah, I like that. Are we all down for that to be the new town name?
Yeah, that's amazing.
Wonderful, wonderful, great. Up to like, this fountain, okay?
I made that.
No PvP, no hitting each other. We got, there's gotta be a place of peace, this town hall. It'll also be a place for arguments, but that's not- Yeah, yeah, everywhere else is free range, but please don't kill each other, we got... Trying to build a community, you're not, you're not an assassination group.
Uh, yeah?
Can you pre-please take me and the rest of these nice folks? Each one, one at a time, whoever wants to go first? Show us your houses, because I've had a really hard time figuring out who lives where, so...
Yeah.
Can I, can I start?
You can start first, Aiden.
Okay.
Someone blew up my bridge. It was probably a creeper, we have a mob problem. It was the ceiling! Right, it's quite, Aiden, yours is over here, right?
Yeah.
The one house I know who it belongs to.
I need food. I checked, I had planning permission before building this.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes, there's a cat plant.
Ori, do you need food?
You don't need to go through the cat door.
Oh boy, cat door!
I'm coming, I'm coming, I'm coming. I'm on my way, just feeding the troops.
You don't have to feed the cat door! It's totally so I can get eaten out! She can't eat me!
No! No!
Please replace the cat.
I, I don't know who, I don't know who picked up the other one, I don't know who picked up the other one.
There's so many people.
Uh-oh, uh-oh.
End of relic.
Guys, why's the end... What?
Do not hurt my brother.
Stop looking at the enderman!
I saved it. Oh my god, that is so loud.
Someone reload, who looked at the enderman?
Reload.
Help me, help me!
Who looked at the enderman?
Help me! Right, who wants to go next?
It spawned right-
I'll, I'll go next, mine's nearby, so...
Come on, Alex.
Stop it! Please!
Uh, wait, I need to-
You wanna hit me at my house?
I've not actually spoken to anyone yet.
That's what I do, I'm sorry.
So, hi.
Hello.
Who is speaking right now?
I don't know.
Evden.
Oh, Evden, right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Hello.
I mean, canonically, I don't know who you are, but...
No. Canonically, I've just gotten out of a jail cell. And, and I'm really overwhelmed about the amount of people that are here.
Guys, guys, guys.
Let me out! Let me out! Can someone please hit me in front of the cross?
Hit, hit you.
Okay, don't all hit me at once!
You don't need that much blood for the blood fight, guys. How have we lost everyone?
I'm, I'm-
I'm still at the cross. Passed away.
Come, come to where we live.
Stop it, no!
Oh my god!
You killed a child, you killed a child!
Go to the fountain, head up to the fountain.
They had sticks on me.
We convene, everyone, we convene, because it just got really chaotic for a minute.
The, the voices in my head are saying that it was a cannon death, so...
Cannon death.
Stop hitting me!
There's only two permanent lives, let's not lose one of them already.
If you hit at the fountain, I hit you.
Do you know what, guys? This, this community's starting to take shape, and we've only added a day.
It's looking pretty good.
Listen, I, I, yay! Right, okay. I wasn't expecting this many people to wanna join the SMP, no mind we'd be on at the same time, this is a bit...
This is what I love to do.
Because most of them are British.
What did you do?
I'm like, one of the few Americans, and it's-
Yeah, I think we've got four, four or five.
What did you do?
Survival of the fittest.
These fish are gonna die, and I just wanna make you aware of that, I don't-
Did you kill a fish?
No, I think, I think, the other one's despawned, I think, I don't know.
Did you-
What the?
Did you kill a fish?
When, who was it? If you blow up my town hall, I'll cry.
I'll help rebuild it, I'll help rebuild it, if it gets blown up.
Someone blew up my fencing, but that's fine, I don't really care about the fencing.
I don't-
This took me like, four hours, just started blowing up.
Someone give me a sign, someone give me a sign.
Right, we were going to see someone's house, do you have a house, Emz?
Me.
I, yeah, I do.
Who's me? I, I'm confused.
Behind you.
Oh, look, yeah, yeah, go.
Wait, wait, can I have a sign? Can someone give me a sign?
Emz, we'll go to yours after.
Can I get my stuff back, guys?
My house is-
Does Aiden have his stuff? I don't think it was Aiden that picked it up.
No, no, I, I fell down, and I picked up this stuff.
My house is-
Because I held a pitchcock. I'm on two hearts.
Oh, oh, over here, over here, I see everyone. There is not enough torches over here.
Oh yeah, this is my hole of death.
Hey, um, this doesn't look very secure.
Don't you!
I am on two hearts, that was payback.
I think, um-
Did you just say something that...
You bum!
Yeah, I'll, I'll see that in a minute. I'm just, I'm just gonna take this enderman to my house, so...
Oh, let's see. Is that how he's saying his name? I was saying that-
I don't know where you guys are, I'm over by the fountain, though.
Uh, we're near the bridge.
Follow me!
I accidentally hit the crippled enderman, why?
Oh, the trash, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You hit the enderman!
You hit my enderman?
I did it!
They hit the enderman, so I smacked them with a sharp enderman.
Alright, one sec, we're having a, we're having a town crisis, what's going on?
I accidentally hit an enderman, then I got murdered.
You accidentally hit the enderman, I accidentally hit you.
Right, okay, uh, everyone. I feel like-
Oh, I do have your stuff.
Feel like a mother. Wait, whose house is that? Is that someone's house? Oh no!
It's in the fountain.
Uh, fish is in the fountain.
Like, in, in the upper part of the fountain.
Fish?
These phantoms are a serious problem.
I think we all need to sleep.
I don't have-
If we have enough beds, that would be great, but I don't-
I don't think we have enough beds to all sleep.
This is for builds you want doing, so if you want to do a big community build-
I'm still stuck.
Or even not a big one, you just need help with the build? Put it on this board, and people read it, and then they will come and help you. You know, big panic room, whoever put that, move. Move.
Maybe I did, I put, I put-
I agree, the panic room is definite, a definite, yeah.
I can, I can do it right now.
Alright. This is getting used a lot, what was this one? Yeah, big panic room, that's being, they should, Ray's literally run off and gone, I can do that right now. Bar slash racetrack? A museum slash adoption site?
I mean, yeah, I would like to be adopted.
Why is the big panic room? Why did you take it off? Oh, this is-
Yeah, who, who, who took away panic room?
Who took away panic room?
I'm making it!
Oh, you're making it?
Oh, where, where, I need one, um-
I'm, I'm making a big one, also, Identity keeps hitting me. We put, uh, Identity Fox in jail, he keeps, they keep hitting me.
Aiden, Aiden, this is, this is Holy Land, no hitting people on the Holy Land. Oh, pumping, I don't know what that is.
Can I please stop being killed? Please!
Just gonna recheck everyone who wants to be on the council.
Why was I killed? I can't even kill like, two percent of them.
I was trying to- Sorry, I'm picking up all your stuff, I'm sorry. Stop dropping her stuff, Aiden, stop! I'm trying to place down, stop, move.
It's just you.
Ray, Ray, move.
Stop it!
You're outside, you're outside spawn. No, it's, it's just her.
They killed me! They did to me, so I need to go back.
Does someone have any oak on them?
They're spending the Holy Land for the purpose of me not hitting them, so I can hand down-
Uh, Snuggles?
They stepped out of the Holy Land, there was a room right here.
How much iron did you have?
A little while ago. Refleet thirty-one.
I have lots of iron on me, so please don't kill me.
Uh, who have the sword?
Can you not do eye contact?
I'm guessing that was Aiden, yeah, sorry.
What the hell is this?
I gift, I gift sub for which-
Geez!
What the hell's happening here?
We don't know.
Uh, Alec is giving old reasons that you shouldn't be on the council.
Oh my god!
Yeah.
Continue giving these shrines and things through my mind.
He's the only person on sub two.
I contact-
You know, I've got subs to pretty much every NCYT, and I have paid for about ninety percent of them. I've just been gifted that many subs.
What is the story to me?
Pretty much all of my subs are gifted.
Don't call me Al. Whoever took that, I hate you.
I have subs to Tommy and Tobo, and that's it, but I have subs to all of them.
You didn't, you didn't, the Holy Lands, I didn't even-
Stop even being silly.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna- Where's, why did I kill a wire, what?
I'll, I'll keep it. I was like, wait, wait, how is a car park a cat, a cat's center? I was like, wait. This seems tough.
That's cat park, that's car park.
I am not gonna be, I'm not gonna keep being killed in the Holy Lands.
Why do we need a car park? This isn't Big Tesco's.
Tesco's-
Stop it! Leave me alone! This is Holy Land, doesn't mean you don't hit someone, leave me alone.
No.
Hey, 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 someone please help me here, I'm being, attempting hate crimes. I don't have a spawn point, stop killing me. We can be friends.
Put your own name on, I'll think so.
I want nothing but peace, just stop killing me, I'm very sad.
One?
Leave me alone.
Yeah, I agree, yes, do that.
Just leave me alone, stop hitting me, we can have peace, please.
Snuggles. Come around here, come around here.
Come on! Come along! Oh, thank you, I mean, it's sort of... Who's writing all these signs? I don't know, I don't know. Oh, this is hard to say.
I mean, I, I want to help people like, like settle in better, you know?
I mean-
Uh, Saturn, here, hi.
I will help with the community food house.
Yeah, I, I, I- I am, I'm gonna like, make a big bar behind my house, so everybody can like, uh, like, take from my chest.
Go and swim to face it, go, go, go and swim in there, go in there.
I don't have a sign, sadly, no.
I have one, nevermind, I have one.
Go in there.
I'm in a-
Sorry, everyone. Sorry, everyone, your signs are being destroyed a little bit.
Okay, don't kill me, um-
I thought I was so amazing. I've already forgotten.
Yes, yes!
Peaceful area.
Yeah, that matters now, after I've been killed twice in the Holy Lands.
I, I don't know whose that was, but, um-
That was mine now.
Okay, guys, if, if you want this place to be secure from mobs, why did you leave the fence gates open?
Uh, because, uh, there is no peace anymore.
Wait.
We, we do not believe in peace on the Legacy.
Who are mixed, I'm not someone.
Why is everybody's name with like, a capital letter, and then that mine is like, lowercase, I'm, I'm-
It's got filth. I'm Aiden. Aiden, did you put your name down?
Oh my lord.
Give me stuff back, give me stuff back, you bum!
Right!
They did it to me three times, where anyone said anything, they did it to me three times. It's the reason of towers, and no one cares.
I thought I was gonna read that courthouse a bit quicker than we were expecting.
Yeah.
To be fair, we can't actually have all of the courtroom for now, because we have seats.
Right, no, I, I, no, 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 everyone here, everyone here, I, I've built, I've built, I've built this.
Alec, I want to sit over here, we don't know where you are.
I, I, I don't think, I don't think that's a really legal setting, you know?
I, I'm, I'm, I'm the judge, jury and executioner, so, um, I'll decide.
Judge, jury and executioner, and you're kinda getting attacked by mobs right now, so it's-
No, I'm, I'm fine, I, they, 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 they don't scare me.
Don't go out there, that's why I'm not-
This is, this is the truth.
Yeah, I, I still, I'll just be here.
Right, okay, okay, so this is now the courthouse for, for, until we can build a courthouse.
Uh, I will put the tax, a pass on, on me, build a courthouse.
Okay, this is the courthouse until we can build a courthouse. Ray, no more kills, Aiden. Ray, Aiden, let's behave, please.
No!
Do you know what? That's outside the Holy Lands, so do as you please, I don't care.
Please, don't hit each other.
They're fighting outside the Holy Lands now, so it's fine.
Ah.
This is the court, you two need to, who, Aiden and Big, wait.
Neither of them are here.
They're out, I'm fighting, I've been watching them fight through the windows.
Wait, remember the jury committee's up, just tell them.
Truce, 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 well, I'll get you.
Give me stuff back!
Truce!
Take a death sentence, throw you both down it, right? All your stuff on you.
Look at that.
Uppals, don't care.
I'll put it there.
Oh! Who it- No!
Watch out for the whole, like, house.
Behind you, behind you, watch out, watch out!
Watch out for the hole, okay?
Anyone see that?
It's called a death hole for a reason, just-
Can I please have my-
Oh, wait, you're gonna drown before you get to the top, you're gonna drown.
Why do we have a death hole?
Who the hell-
Because I, yeah, I mined it, uh, in half an hour.
No!
Has someone wanna start building a courthouse up? I am-
Uh, I'm gonna give this in half an hour, we can use it as a very secure-
No, you're so cool.
This is a very-
I'm starting to build a courthouse, don't worry.
When people get convicted, we just drop them down the death hole.
Yeah! No, 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 who, who, who took the water?
Alec, 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 I have no way of getting out.
But building a courthouse, it would be quite impractical, because, you know, you've got Snuggles' house right there.
We need to attack.
I mean, if we build it like this, and we have a little bit of an, uh, uh, extension over here, we can drop them in the death hole, and still have like, a near town centre.
We could, we could, we could just build it this way, listen, hear me out. Could just build it this way, but then, once they get convicted, we all do, make them do a walk of shame to the death.
Can you guys not remove the water?
So we can basically make an execution.
By the way, don't, you need to swim up, you need to swim up, or else you'll drown, okay?
I don't know who these are, but they're mine now, because I'm hungry.
Stop this guy, I'm sick of this, I will quit the SMP, I will go home.
Oh no.
Don't quit, we've only been doing it today.
I'll get my memories back, I'll leave-
That's not like a shovel for me.
I love how you go through-
Give my memories back, please. I will simply track my memories.
Trying to get ahead of ourselves, there, guys, trying to get ahead of ourselves. Yeah, this is, this is, this is gonna be the courthouse, and then once, once someone gets convicted, we'll make a path with fences that leads straight to the death hole.
Oh, yeah, 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 we can make like, uh, we can encase it with like, uh, um...
We can get rid of this water, right, and we can make this the death hole, and the fences can go over side, and they just have to walk straight into the death hole when they get convicted. I think anyone picked it up, you know, so you find it.
Stop it, leave me alone!
No, yeah.
Yeah!
No!
Leave me alone!
Help, wait, wait.
They're gonna kill me, I have no food.
Seriously though, I, someone took all of my things, just happened to be in the bathroom.
Oh my god!
I didn't mind, I was talking to the voices in my head.
Yeah, um, it was not me, by the way, it was, uh, it was, oh wait, I don't actually know where.
That was very rude to do while I was talking to the voices in my head.
Can there be repercussions for me being killed in the Holy Lands, and, uh, doing self-defense? Who's the fault in the hole? I, I was killed many times in the Holy Lands, and then I, I defended myself.
We're still in the hole, I don't know who's still in there anymore.
I'm qualified to do it, I did it one time in VRChat.
I have legally become a judge, so, uh-
Legally?
I am on the-
I have been through loads of training, including building the entire thing, you know?
I will be on defense side, the other person that is a lawyer will be on the other side, I can't remember what the other side's for.
Prosecution side.
Yes, I'll be defense, I guess.
I also have a-
I'm safe up here now. Snuggles, I, can I please hire you to, uh, help me sue Identity Fox for, uh-
Oh, is this the path to the death hole?
Uh, you have to go to the prosecution. Prosecution thing. I am only defense.
Courthouse?
I defend.
We need a bigger courthouse.
Yeah, I, I will, I will build that, um, but I have right now not, not much time, since everybody was screaming.
That's, that's fine.
Yeah, so, um, I have a temporary courthouse, uh, I will meanwhile be, uh, preparing for the bigger courthouse, so I'll be collecting stuff for it.
Who was supposed to be prosecuted, or whatever?
Voices in my head, what?
What, what, who was supposed to be the one?
Uh, Ray and Aiden.
Ray and Aiden, okay, where's Aiden? Aiden, you have to come down. Aiden, Aiden, you have to come down, you can't, you can't stand up there forever.
The death hole isn't that bad, I died in it, I promise, it's not, it's not as bad as it seems. I know it's called the death hole, but it's really not that bad. Not as bad as it seems, I swear, it's okay, it's okay, don't worry.
Plus, plus, it will be a great, it, it's, it's okay, because actually, there's, there's a, there's a block down there that came from a good friend, right? It's a, it's a, it's an enderman block.
Aiden, it's okay, the death hole's not that bad, I promise.
Stay up there, I don't wanna fall on the ground anymore, I don't get to be on the ground.
That is, that is-
They stared at me, and they stole my stuff.
I mean, you can build a whole star if you want.
Uh, wait, is Aiden the one getting sued, or is Aiden the one suing?
I'm getting sued.
Oh, I'm, I'm, I am your, I am your lawyer, and I will do whatever it takes to get you to not die in the de, in the death hole, okay?
I didn't, I think, I didn't just go in the prison for like, a day.
To be fair, if you don't touch the ground again, technically, technically, you're fine, just make enough noise.
You just can't get any food, or like-
You're just whipping the air from now, and you're fine. It's okay, Aiden, it's okay. In my opinion, that's the best thing, because Ray, Ray's gonna kill you too.
Yeah, I, it was self-defense, I didn't, I didn't, if we can put this behind us, and we can be friends, I won't sue you, but I want you to-
Maybe, Aiden, you'll both go down the death hole, now wouldn't that be fun?
It won't be fun, because I don't have anything, and they have a diamond axe, and it's unfair. I have nothing to my name anymore, I have my, my life, I have my throne.
I have a defense.
You mean from them?
An enderman hybrid.
Or from the death hole?
Guys, guys, I have a problem.
Setting off my enderman instinct.
A per-
Okay, um... Uh, I have a plan for like, an, 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 like, a plan for the town hall, and it's gonna be pretty, okay? Of the courthouse.
Now, Polish, I love you. Now, Polish, you're my best friend now, now, Polish, I'll, I'll give you all my riches.
You do realize I'm now back at my house.
Okay, is somebody going to get in the courthouse today, because then I will be breaking it down?
Is Aiden hiding because of the, uh?
Probably.
Aiden, I won't, Aiden, I'll drop all, I'll drop all charges, I'll drop all the charges.
Do we have, do we have to build it near the death hole, because I, I'm, I have a pretty big design where everybody-
I mean, I could just make another death, death hole.
Yeah, yeah.
Because it took me half an hour to make this one, then I'll just use another half an hour to make another one.
Okay, great, I will go build it to where some, where you guys can now do the trial, and I will just build it.
I will see you later. And, yeah.
What the hell? Um, no, 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 okay, um... This house, it's so... So big. This... Excuse me. Hi. I was wondering if you- I was wondering if you, um. If you know what's going on.
Hello, hello?
Hi, hi, sorry, um, yeah, h-.
You're fine.
Yeah, how, how are you? Um.
I'm, 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 I mean, as good as anyone can be, I guess, having no memories of who they are or were.
Um. So, it's, it's just, I saw this house, it just, it looked really cool, and I, I was.
Oh, thank you.
Uh, yeah, I, I'm, I'm, I'm down, I, 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 my house is, is down there, it's that little tower thingy. Um, with, sorry, it's, it's with a spruce.
You're fine. Oh, I, I passed that earlier, I was wondering who that belongs to.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of a work in progress, I accidentally built it, um, uh, I think a bit too far away, um, but then, yeah. I, I'm live, by the way.
I don't, I, I'm not sure official borders have been set up yet, so we'll probably just work around you.
Okay. Alright, well, I, I'm gonna.
Son seems to be in charge, so.
Yeah, yeah, it looks, it looks that way, um, alright, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go, I'll see you later, um.
Alright. Uh, bye, I guess.
Alright, um, they seem nice, um. But we're feeling well, aren't we? Like, I recognize them, so, uh, but not, not like, recognize. No, not, I don't know, they just kinda seem a bit familiar, um.
How many people have we got? Let's count heads. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. Fourteen of you are here right now.
Let's go and take up one.
This town grew really big in a day, didn't it?
Yeah, it's, I'm, I'm very confused, um.
Time.
So, does, does anyone know? Anything, to put it simply? First, first row go first. First row go first, do you, do you, any of you remember anything?
No.
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 No? Second row?
Not really. No.
No, well, you're kinda not in a row. I like that you're not in a row.
Um, wait, uh, sorry, sorry, I, I.
No, no worries, it's fine. Hello, join the crowd, just sit on here. I'll join the crowd. Well, this is a lot of people, okay. Right, okay, so no one remembers anything. I don't remember anything, and I was here three days longer than you guys, so.
Oh, uh, okay.
So, give me your names one at a time.
It is a bit weird that she was there three days before us.
Uh, my name is Saturn.
Ori?
Hi, I'm, I'm Alec, um.
Alec, okay.
Hi.
Okay, this is all, this all just seems a bit weird, I don't, I don't know.
Okay, so, well, for those of you.
Hey, uh, can, can, can you, can you put the sword away, it's, it's, can, can you put the sword?
Yeah, yeah, I'll put it away. You can call me Snugga or Sunset, I reply to either.
Okay.
Uh, yeah. Uh, I was here about three days before you guys, and then you all just kinda showed up, which is kinda weird, but we're not gonna talk about it. Uh, I don't know what's going on. Uh, I don't remember anything, really. Uh, except my name, I remember that. But yeah, so. That's, that's the life we're living, guys, uh, I don't know why none of us remember anything, it's kinda strange, but what can you do? Does anyone have any ideas for what to name the town? Because we've kinda had to start a community ourselves, because none of us remember the communities we're from, so.
Um.
Oh?
Ne- Newtopia. Like, like.
I like that.
Like this.
I like that. So you guys were mine. Iden, I think you won that conversation.
Hi, wha, 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 one, one of the voices in my head just said, um, just said LeWumberg, um.
So we've got quite a few, we've got quite a mixture here, though.
Why, why don't we do a vote, where you, you read through them, and we all just say if we support it, I guess.
Okay. Uh, alright, so we got Newtopia. How people feeling about that one? Oh, we got a couple hands up, we got a couple hands up. Just punching the air, that's a good way of doing it. Right, uh, Mind White. Ray, okay. Uh. Bedtoe. Uh, is, is that Ava Down? Is that how you pronounce that? Ava, ooh, I'm sorry. Ava Down, yeah? Uh. Or Time Chip? I like that, who came up with that? There was quite a lot of hands up for that, actually, there was quite a few hands up.
Um.
I think.
Uh, well, and, 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 another one of the voices in my head just said Zootopia, um.
Oh, uh, I think, I think Time Chip won, yeah?
Yeah, ta, so, so Time. Chip, okay, yeah?
Yeah, I like that. Are, are we all down for that to be the new town name?
Yeah, that'll make it.
Sure, yeah, sure, sure.
Wonderful, wonderful, uh.
Uh, I'm, do, do we have anyone who's like, you know, kind of leading at all?
Uh, no, I was here on my own, so not, not really, no. You guys kind of all just cleaned.
Well, I, 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 I can help out if, if anyone needs help.
Yeah, yeah, I've got multiple seats at the big, the big table, you know? There's, there's quite a few seats. I've only taken up one of them, you know? That's right. So, for that, put your names on the board, that works perfectly. Whoever's not here, make sure you repeat this to them at the ask, by the way, guys.
Okay.
Okay.
Say, oh, this happened at the town meeting today.
You don't have to use a cash word.
Help, 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 help.
Please replace the trapdoor.
I, I, I don't know who, I don't know who picked up the other one, I don't know who picked up the other one.
Did someone just actually set themselves on fire?
Uh, wasn't, nah.
Right, who wants to go next?
I can go next, I, I can go next. I, I can, I can go next.
Why, why are the voices in my head calling me embarrassing?
Enderman, please don't hurt the enderman.
Yeah! I am Block Man! Uh-oh, uh-oh, um.
I have to reload.
Guys, why is the en, what?
Stop looking at the enderman!
Guys!
I saved him.
I'm scared.
Someone reload, who looked at the enderman?
Help me, help me!
Who looked at the enderman?
Help me!
Right, who wants to go next?
I'll, I'll, I'll go next, mine's nearby, so, um.
Go on, Alec.
It's just over here. Well, th- this is my humble abode, I, I moved it from up there, because I was worried it was in the wrong place, um.
It looks nice.
I really like this, it's, I, I like the design, I was looking at it before.
Yeah.
It feels very safe.
Yeah, I, that, that was kind of, I was trying to go for something that's just as kind of safe as possible, yeah, yeah, that's kind of what I was going for.
Canonically, I've just gotten out of a jail cell.
Canonically, who just, ca- ca- canonically, who just opened all of my trapdoors? Can you guys stop? Canonically, can you guys stop opening all the trapdoors? I should probably put my armor back on, so I don't die, um.
I'm real happy that other people go under the wall.
I've, 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 I've got, I've got two shields, so I'm, I'm super safe, guys. Hello.
We need to ring a prime bill, to be honest.
Oh!
Yeah, we need a prime bill.
Guys, I've got a friend, guys, I've got a friend.
Right, uh, gonna have to pull my cord back out.
Wait, what?
There's a fan, so I can hear it. Run!
Run, 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 run.
Right, is that everyone? Does anyone else have a house?
I do, but I'm lost.
Friend!
I passed away.
Stop it, stop it, no! Oh my god! I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry.
Who will show me the house?
Wow!
Oh my god!
I'm not in.
Okay, hold on, give me a second, give me a second, I need to.
This is very chaotic.
There we go, it was disgracing the fountain.
This is what I do.
Cause most of us are British.
Wha- what did you do? I'm like one of the few Americans, and it's.
Yeah, I've only got four, four or five.
Who angered them?
Wait, I'll save him, I'll save him, um.
It's already outside, you guys still, I need to turn my game songs off.
Guys, I've got him!
Oh, who pick, who picked up the door?
Uh, oh, sorry, me, oh wait, can, I've got the enderman.
Okay.
Um, I'll, I'll go and take him to my house.
I accidentally hit the, the enderman, why?
You hit the enderman?
You hit my enderman?
My accident!
They hit the enderman, so I smacked them with a sharp end of an axe. Uh, you accidentally hit the enderman, I accidentally hit you with an axe.
Oh.
You got a lot, so, so.
Yeah, um, I, 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 I. I, I, I. Yeah, I, I, I put my name down, um.
That was really quick.
Yeah. I'll, I'll, I'll. I'll, I'll, I'll add some extra signs, just so that people can, um, put them on.
There's definitely less fish in here than those.
No, there's more.
There's more? I knew there was a gap, but I thought it was less.
Uh, no, I put three in to start with, and I kept filling it up, um.
Oh my gosh.
I've got no, uh, wait, I, I, I'm gonna get another one, one sec, one sec, um.
I feel like, I feel like what we need to work on, guys, I feel like we need to go find some cats.
I mean, I can, I can attract them with my cat senses. Um, wait, uh, should I make up like a, like a area?
Blub, 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 splash, splash. Splash, splish, splash, splash. I'm gonna drown.
Who, who normally drown then, Alec?
Me. Why are there so many fish?
It's because fish are great.
Um, fish, okay.
I don't have any more food again.
I don't eat that. I'm just.
We really need to get, like, uh, do something about the problem.
Blynn said thank you, she can't join the call at the minute.
Oh, that's fine.
What, where?
Oh, I'm in the area, I'm in the area.
Who's talking?
In fact, let me read what Maggie just said.
I'm really just a cat, no.
Is anyone likely panicking? Oh, no, it's okay, Maggie, we've got this, we've got everyone else, at least you're not alone. We've got everyone here. We're all in the same situation, so it's.
Look, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm sure we'll find out, like, what happened or something, I don't know, I mean, there's gotta be a reason.
Just gonna recheck everyone who wants to be on the council.
Why was I killed? I keep being killed, like, who the hell does that?
Alec, why have you put your name in such a different way?
Um, I, I, I thought, I, I thought, I thought, I, I, I thought if I put more names, I might have a higher chance, um. So, so, so you'd think they're different people, and then realize, you know, that I'm the same person.
I did think they were different people, I tried to double check it.
I want my, I want my sign back, I want my other sign.
Sorry.
I guess I don't have either.
I'd convert with the voices in my head.
Uh, I'm guessing you had this, and this.
Did Ma- did Maggie, did Maggie have?
Mine have iron too, did you have iron?
When did Maggie leave?
How much iron did you have?
A little while ago.
I have lots of iron on me, so please, no one kill me.
Uh, who have the sword? I'm guessing that was Iden, he had a sword.
You need to check.
Uh, I have some sticks, but I have some swords. I don't really.
Alec, I, 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 I.
No, you need to put, you need to put, um, uh, you need to put, because it's.
Did you have iron, Ray?
Because you told us all you were in a hundred player video, you need to put Friend of Wilbur's salt on there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay, yeah, uh.
Friend of Wilbur's salt will definitely.
I can't hear what you're saying. Did you have iron nod? Yes. And shake, no. I think I did, I don't remember, I had a sword. Oh, I just had iron here. I don't know if that, that was all yours. I had a sword, but I don't edit that iron. Was that all yours?
Also, a Wilbur sw- sw- switch sub, I'm not subbing to Wilbur, because he streams like once every blue moon. Ooh, from Rondo, I give, I give subs for.
Like, geez.
What the hell's happening here?
We don't know.
Uh, Alec is giving all the reasons that he should be on council.
Oh my god.
And the, the, the best starts, Friend of Wilbur.
No, no, oh!
Oh no!
Could I have my signs back?
Like, pretty much all of my subs are dead.
Don't call me Al. Whoever put that, I hate you.
I have subs to Tommy and Tubbo, and that's it, but I have subs to all of them. Ow. Using the.
No. No, please, please, no!
Did you just, the Holy Lands, I didn't even.
I can't believe I'm being bullied.
Okay, oh! So, do you wanna be on the council or not, is my question?
No, I won't, no.
No, okay.
Already decided who is gonna be on the town council?
Yeah, I did it quickly, the voices in my head were helping.
Oh, wow. Yay, I can't believe I'm the number one spot on the council.
Okay, guys, if, if you want this place to be secure from mobs, why did you leave the fence gates open? Uh, because, uh, there is no peace anymore.
We, we do not believe in peace on the Legacy SMP.
You're being attacked by fans on one side.
Look, I'm, I don't care, you think I care? No, I, I'm fine, I'm fine. The, the, I, I, only people scare me, not mobs.
They did it to me three times where anyone said anything, they did it to me three times in prison. They did it three times, and no one cares.
I thought we were gonna need that courthouse a bit quicker than we were expecting.
Yeah.
Someone has all my things.
Alright, I'll, I'll go, I'll go and build the courthouse now, everyone outside, everyone out here.
I have no room, I have no room in my room, so.
I'm, 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 I'm gonna, I'm gonna go and build the courthouse right here, everyone come here.
Yeah.
Alec, can you just sit over here? We don't know where you are.
I'm, I'm, I'm.
I don't think, I don't think that's a really legal setting, you know?
Hi, I'm, 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 I'm the judge, jury and executioner, so, um, I'll decide, um.
Judge, jury and executionist, and you're kinda getting attacked by mobs right now, so it's.
No, I'm, I'm fine, I, they, 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 they don't scare me.
Think you're above the law, huh, Alec?
Yes.
I'm gonna die.
I'm on the town council, yeah, right, okay.
Look at that.
Others, don't care.
Don't you dare, don't you dare.
You, uh.
Anyone ever seen my and I in the courthouse, you have a death pit, that's what I'll do.
Sad, do you have a, a freak chat?
Stop, stop. Wasn't me, no, no, it wasn't me, um.
I watched you do it.
It says in the chat.
Uh, no, 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 that, that, look, I, I don't have the stuff, it was, it was, it was Paradox, Paradox picked it all up, it wasn't me. Wait, no, no, behind you, behind you, watch out, watch out, no, no, behind you!
On purpose, so that someone's shooting a grown up. Watch out for the hole.
What the, oh! Oh, did anyone see that?
It, it's called a death hole for a reason, just.
Why do you have a death hole? Yeah.
In this, in half an hour, we can use it as a very secure place.
Wow, you're so cool.
This is a very starting to build a courthouse, don't worry. When people get convicted, we just drop them down the death hole.
Yeah. No, 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 who, who, who took the water? Alec, 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 I have no way of getting out.
But building a courthouse, we should build it this way, listen, hear me out, could just build it this way, but then, once they get convicted, we all do, make them do a walk of shame to the death.
Can you guys not remove the water?
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll stop, I'll stop, I'll stop, I'll stop.
Can somebody make otherwise in the trapdoor over it, so we can literally, like?
That's really scary, who just got pushed down?
Me.
Can somebody get me a shuffle?
Oh, I guess, I guess I'm getting a taste of my own medicine, okay.
Yeah.
Cause someone just bought the water, I don't, I don't think anyone picked it up either, so you can.
I've got my own, don't worry, guys.
No, yeah.
It's very rude to do while I was talking to the voices in my head.
Hello, oh.
Who's gone down the death hole, don't just press-
Why did you block? No, 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 don't do that, no, it ruins it.
I'm snogging now!
Oh, but that's OP power.
You ru- you ruined it.
You lo-
Ruining my hole. You guys are ruining my hole.
Okay. Chat, I'm gonna end up my stream, um, and we're gonna raid someone. I hope you've had fun today, I'm gonna go and raid, so, um, have fun, bye, I'll probably see you guys tomorrow.
Is everyone in? You don't have to be muted, by the way, guys, you can, can be unmuted, just don't all talk at once. Jesus, how much more have you showed up now for? It's gonna show up. How many people have we got? Let's count heads, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. Fourteen of you are here right now. This town grew really big in a day, didn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm very confused, um-
So, does, does anyone know? Anything, to put it simply? First, first row go first, first row go first, you, do you, any of you remember anything?
No.
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 No? Second row?
Not really.
No.
No, well, you're kinda not in a row, I like that you sat there.
Um, wait, uh, sorry, sorry, I, I-
No, no worries, it's fine. Hello, join the crowd, just sit on here. Or join the crowd, wow, this is a lot of people, okay, right, okay, so no one remembers anything, I don't remember anything, and I was here three days longer than you guys, so-
Oh, okay.
Starting here, and going like round, so starting here, ending with Bunny. Give me all, give me your names, one at a time, come on.
Uh, my name is Saturn.
Nice to meet you.
I'm Maggie.
Maggie?
Ori.
Ori?
Hi, I'm, I'm Alec, um-
Alec, okay.
Hi, I'm Alessia.
Alessia, alright, uh-
Uh, I'm Aiden.
I've met you, Aiden, a few times, yeah?
My name is Snuggles.
Snuggles, we've definitely met, hello.
Hi, I'm Lou.
Hi, Lou, uh- Candy?
I'm Shadow.
Hello, Shadow, I know I've met you, I've met, I've stole, stole a few weeks from you. Kenzie? Pretty sure Kenzie and McCameh is today, guys, I've not seen Kenzie before. And, I, I've met Bunny. Alright, and then we've got-
Oh, hi.
Hello. You're, you're the only one not in the crowd. Okay, so, well, for those of you-
Hey, can, can, can you, can you put the sword away, it's, can you put the sword?
Yeah, yeah, that way.
I'm Ray.
Ray? Sorry, Ray, it's because we've talked so much already, Ray, it's- Because we've had conversations, uh, anyway, for any of you who don't know me, uh, you can call me Snuggit or Sunset, I reply to either. Uh, yeah, uh, I was here about three days before you guys, and then you all just kinda showed up, which was kinda weird, but we're not gonna talk about it. Uh, I don't know what's going on, uh, I don't remember anything, really, uh, except my name, I remember that. But yeah, so- That's, that's the life we've been living, guys, uh, I don't know why none of us remember anything, kinda strange, but what can you do? How's, how's everyone, has everyone been settling in well?
For the most part, yeah.
Yeah, yeah?
Um, yeah, yeah, I guess.
I mean, I've died a lot, but, you know.
Oh, well, yeah, I think I've fallen off-
I think I'm the, I'm, I think I'm the person that has died the most, just-
I think we may have a mob issue.
A little bit, little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've tried, I've placed quite a lot torches, if you guys have noticed, but they don't seem to have done much, yeah.
Inheriting them.
So, next, next point of conversation, which I've been thinking about, does anyone have any ideas for what to name the town? Because we've kinda had to start a community ourselves, because none of us remember the communities we're from, so-
Um, uh-
Um.
Mindwife, maybe?
Ni- Newtopia.
Newtop-
Like, like- This.
I like that. Spruce Town, since we basically all met in the spruce forest. We, uh, this is, yeah. Mindwife, ooh. No memory. We're down with a time chip, wow, I like them, they're very- These are good memes, you guys, LeMindberg. I didn't think you won that position.
Right, wha- 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 one of the voices in my head just said, um, just said LeWummenberg.
LeWummenberg. I don't know, we've got quite a few, we've got quite a mixture here, though. Got quite a mixture going, um, I, I kinda like all of them, this is a hard choice.
Why, why, why don't we do a vote, where, you, you read through them and we all just say if we support it, yes?
Uh, alright, so we got Newtopia. How are people feeling about that one? Oh, we got a couple hands up, we got a couple hands up? Just punching the F, yeah, that's a good way, isn't it? Right, uh, Mindwife. Ray, okay, uh- Bedtopia, uh, is that Ava Down, is that how you pronounce that? Ava, ooh, I like Storyville. Ava Down, yeah? Uh- Or Time Chip, I like that, who came up with that? There is quite a lot of hands up for that, actually, there was quite a few hands up. Okay, that was about five hands up for that, uh, and Storyville.
What about Bedtopia, wait?
Was Bedtopia a serious, was Bedtopia a-
No, it's- Bedtopias- Bedtopia's perfect.
Bedtopia.
Um-
I think Time Chip was-
Uh, well, and, 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 another one of the voices in my head just said Zootopia.
Uh, I think, I think Time Chip won, how do people feel about it?
That one's not terrible, I like that one.
Yeah, yeah, we can go with that.
I, I, I kinda like the ending on it, because the ending is, on it is generic, like, for the time, but like-
Yeah, so, it's Time- Chip, okay, yeah?
Yeah, I like that, are, are we all down for that to be the new town name?
Yeah, that's amazing.
Sure, yeah, sure.
Wonderful, wonderful, great, there was something else we needed to talk about, but totally not forgotten, it's totally-
I, I, I mean, do, do we have anyone who's like, you know, kind of leading at all?
Uh, no, I was here on my own, so not, not really, no.
We're gonna have like a council.
Well, I, 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 I can help out if anyone-
Yeah, yeah, I've got multiple seats at the big, the big table, you know? There is, there is quite a few seats, I've only taken up one of them, you know?
I mean, I'm not the whole fan, I don't mind.
Maybe we can have a bit of a, a bit of an application process?
Yeah?
Yeah, that could work.
Sure.
Yeah, that would work, I'll put some, do you wanna put a sign on the, uh, notice board outside, with your-
Yeah, okay.
Name on, and we'll go from there, how does that sound?
Yeah.
So, for that, put your names on the board, that works perfectly, whoever's not here, make sure you repeat this to them if they ask, by the way, guys.
Okay.
Okay.
Just say, oh, this happened at the town meeting today, this area, right, come outside with me, everyone, come outside with me.
Okay.
Up to like this fountain, okay?
I made that, by the way.
No PvP, no hitting each other, okay?
I made the fountain, by the way, uh, we're-
I know, it's very nice, I like it, from this, from-
Wait, where's the fish?
Where'd the fish go?
Where did the fish go?
Jeremy, no!
No, not Jeremy!
I don't think this is deep enough for fish.
No, no, fish can live in this.
Oh, yeah, PvP from here to the fountain, no, we don't hit people here, think of it as a holy land, we don't, no killing, no, no nothing, alright? Because we got, there's gotta be a place of peace, this town hall.
Okay, but everywhere else is free range, right?
Can I, do I-
Yeah, yeah, everywhere else is free range, but please don't kill each other, we don't. Trying to build a community, not, not an exclamation mark group. Right, can you all, can you all stand on this path here for me, line up, please, just line up for me.
Oh, um, oh, okay.
This is totally not for a screenshot, just, sorry, one sec, let me just, let me just get a nice little- God, who knew you could take pictures in this day and age, guys, who knew? Who knew? Wait, I need to move sideways. Ah, confusing myself because I'm in F5. There we go, some nice, nice screenshots. Okay, well, now that's done, there's one more thing I wanna do while I've got you all here.
Uh, yeah?
Can you pre-please take me and the rest of these nice folks, each one, one at a time, whoever wants to go first? Show us your houses, because I've had a really hard time figuring out who lives where, so-
Yeah.
Can I, can I start?
You can start first, Alec, you can start first.
Okay.
Someone blew up my bridge.
It's probably a creeper, we have a mob problem.
It was the ceiling!
Right, it's, Alec, yours is over here, right?
Yeah.
It's the one house I know who it belongs to, I'm on my way, just feeding the troops.
You don't have to use the cat door! It's only so I can get in and out!
Help!
Oh, oh!
Help!
She came in!
Help!
No! No!
Please replace the trapdoor.
I, I, I don't know who, I don't know who picked up the other one, I don't know who picked up the other one.
Did someone just actually set themselves on fire?
Uh, they walked into the campfire. It's kind of everyone's community house by now, but-
Gonna hold a flower now, because I feel like that's less daunting than a sword, so-
So, this is, this is my humble abode. You don't have to use a cat door!
Cat door only. Do you know what the funny thing is? We all have cat doors, where are the cats?
I am the cat!
No, 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 I mean the creeper scaring cats, creeper, creepers aren't scary.
I mean, uh, for some reason, they don't get scared by me, they just really want to explode me.
They are really nice cats, you know?
This is the community house, this is where we all shared beds.
Yeah, it's actually kinda funny, because it's technically my house, but everyone just runs in and uses my beds.
Yeah. Okay, who wants to go next?
Uh, I can.
Thank you.
Yeah, there's- Over here's my house.
I watched Saturn's upper west for like two hours.
It was, it, 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 I, I am one of the few without a cat door, because-
Yeah, so, can someone, can someone, can someone close the door, so I can show you guys how I get in?
Enderman, please don't hurt endermans. Please!
Yeah! I am block man.
What?
Stop looking at the enderman!
Okay, 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 I'm out, I'm out, who's next?
I can go next.
Alright, lead the way.
Alright, follow me.
Follow Ray, everyone, just in case you don't know who's talking. These stepping stones need sorting, they are not spaced out right, I fell in the wall three times. Oh, look at this, this is nice.
Ray, can I make some trapdoors with your bridgewood?
Hold up, hold up, this one from the nether, where's the pole?
Uh, in my house, in, in my house, it's in my house.
Oh, right, okay.
It's in my basement.
It's, we, it's, it's right, it's right in, um- Uh, it's right in the crimson forest, so I didn't go very far. Ow! Who just put me in my house?
So, it's in my, it's in my basement, past my super smelter.
Right, who wants to go next?
I'll go next, mine's nearby, so, um-
Stop it!
Well, th- this is my humble abode, I, I moved it from up there, because I was worried it was in the wrong place, um-
I really like this, it's, I, I like the design, I was looking at it before.
Yeah.
It feels very safe.
Yeah, I, that, that was kind of, I was trying to go for something that's gonna save us both, yeah, yeah, that's kind of what I was going for.
Yeah, I like it, I like it.
Hello.
Ah, people can hear me, hello.
I'm trying to intimidate it.
Yeah, we're just house touring.
I just got out of a jail, not actually spoken to anyone yet.
That's what I do, I'm sorry.
So, hi.
Wait, who is speaking right now, I can't-
I need to-
Evden.
Hello, Evden, right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Hello.
I mean, canonically, I don't know who you are, but-
No. Canonically, I've just gotten out of a jail cell.
Who's house is that?
Help me out, please.
Canonically, can you guys stop opening all the trapdoors?
Can someone, please, thank you.
Whose house is that, over here? Does anyone know?
Wait, I don't, I don't know where you are, um-
This, the, over, if you go back towards Saturn's house, the one behind Saturn's house, whose is that? The insane builds going on, can someone show that off, whoever's it is?
You let go.
This is insane, whoever's building this-
Can someone, can, does someone have food?
This is my house.
This is your, who's house, who's that?
Maggie, hi, hello.
This is your house? You told me you could build, but I didn't think you meant this well.
It's so cool.
Why's everyone got wrong?
To be fair, I think this is the best house I've ever made, so I'm quite proud of it, but-
Ah, hello to you!
Wait, no, 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 get, get away, get, where?
Who looked at it? Does anyone else, else have a house? I, Kenzie Bun, do you have a house yet?
I mean, we, we have, we have the church, that, if that, we're, we're starting to build a church, yeah, we've started it.
So excited for this church, let's, yeah, show me, show me, show me, this is the by-church of Prime, everyone.
Oh!
It's all the way.
It's by-church of something.
Oh, bug.
It's up on their mountain, it's, it's not finished yet, but-
I am not doing that, my legs are coming, I'm not jumping that far to the ground.
I should probably put my armour back on, so I don't die.
I really have to let people go under the wall and say we're dead.
I've, 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 I've got, I've got two shields, so I'm, I'm super safe.
I checked my chat and I lost.
We need a prime bell in here, I feel like that's better.
Yeah, we do. We need to ring a prime bell, to be honest.
Oh!
Yeah!
Sup, guys?
Guys, I've got a friend, guys, I've got a friend.
I've lost all my-
Wait, what?
The fountain, I can't hear it, run!
Oh, oh.
Run, 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 run.
Right, is that everyone? Does anyone else have a house?
I do, but I'm lost.
I don't know where. Uh, head back, head back to the fountain, everyone, head up to the fountain, you can be in every, every-
Oh, oh, uh, here we go.
It's not really KI for a minute. There's only two of them, let's not lose one anyway.
If you hit at the fountain, I hit you.
Do you know what, guys, this, this community's starting to take shape, remember me, I'll get a debt.
It's looking pretty good, it's looking really good.
To say, I, I, I know something the fountain needs.
Okay.
Is it a fish?
Trust me, I have been gathering fish, I have been gathering fish, I have three buckets of salmon.
No, don't, don't disgrace my fountain with netherite, please.
Okay, who was showing me?
It's like over this way.
Who was showing me the house?
What?
What, guys? Oh my god.
Come on in.
Okay, hold on, give me a second, give me a second, I need to, oh.
Ray, oh my god.
Did I shout it?
There we go.
I was disgracing the fountain.
I, um, I, I, I know-
Snuggles, Snuggles started it, and I had to, I had to do justice.
Okay, she hit a fish.
I'm at the fountain, you can't hit me.
This is so many people, I've never, I had, I wasn't, I was just underground the whole time. This is so many people, I've never, I had, I wasn't, I was just underground the whole time.
Ems, yay! Right, okay. I wasn't expecting this many people to wanna join the SMP, never mind we be on at the same time, this is a bit.
This is wild.
Cause most of us are British. Do you have a house, Ems?
Yeah, I do.
Who's me? I, I'm confused.
Behind you!
Oh, look, yeah, there you go.
Wait, wait, can I have a sign? Can I get a sign?
Ems, we'll go to yours after.
This is, this is my tiny humble abode.
Oh, look at you using axe. Right, who's next? Ems, you're next.
House is by the bridge, so head to the bridge.
Look, I like this house, small and simple, I like the west side.
I've been filling in creeper holes. Sure, I have a helmet, I might know it is that.
How long did that roof actually take? It must have taken so long.
Uh, it took about three hours.
Oh my god, bless you.
What?
Yeah.
They had to restart quite, quite a lot.
I was, I was parkouring on it about three hours ago, so I know it was no way to finish.
This is my unfinished house right here. Uh, don't go inside, there's an enderman inside.
Why does everyone's houses have endermans?
Who angers?
Wait, I'll save him, I'll save him, um.
It's all the outside. I don't have any, I don't even have any house down.
Guys, I've got him!
Like, we're having a, we're having a town crisis, what's going on?
I accidentally hit an enderman, then I got murdered.
Oh dear.
Yes.
Uh. You accidentally hit the enderman, I accidentally hit you with an axe.
Okay, uh, I think Alyssa wants to show us, uh, house.
Give me my crap, where's my crap?
Wait, whose house is that? Is that someone's house?
Ignore the deer, it's, um.
Oh, Flower has a hea- a house as well. Okay, we'll go to Flowers after.
I've hardly been above ground at all, so I'm just trying to get my bearings most of the time.
Kind of awful up here.
I've spent way too much time above ground.
This is so cool.
Right, everyone, this way.
All the flowers.
How did you get this many brick? That must have taken ages.
That's what I thought when I first saw this.
It took me about three hours to get all the.
Oh, oh, these are walls. Ah, they're the walls.
You know, your house, your house looked so good when you were first building it, and I honestly thought one of the mobs did it.
Very, it's very clean, I like it, it's cozy.
Right, whose is this over here? This is Flowers.
This is so cool. Oh, I love this.
Oh, this is.
We got a little hobbit hole.
I like this, this is cozy.
I love the tent.
I love hobbit holes. My house is gonna be a hobbit hole once I actually start building it. I love it, I like, you got a nice little entryway that's, two stone pillars on it, I like it.
Um, where, where's, where's the little prison place?
Yeah, prison. This is my house, that isn't built yet.
Oh, that's cool.
I, I, they, yeah, that's my house that has about, that's all that's done so far.
Okay, I think it's, it could, I think.
Oh, it's over here, it's over here.
Wait.
Isn't it? Yeah, it is.
You're the one who sleeps in the cave?
Yeah.
Oh, this.
Yeah, down here.
Oh, this is cool.
Oh wow, this is, this is a good way.
This is where I, I canonically woke up in one of the cells, the one with the dirt in it, I like climbed out itself.
We, we, we should make, we should make a mob farm thingy.
I love that you've got whole cells going on.
I canonically woke up in this cell over here.
Oh.
Oh, ah, who just hit me?
Wait, who woke up in the cell?
I did, Evden.
I know, there's so many people, it's very confusing, but we'll get used to it.
If someone, if someone does a bad, they can go in jail.
Right, I need to pause to. Anyway, good, good town meeting, guys, went well.
Ah.
Got a lot talked about.
Thank you. Yeah.
Could I get, could I get a summary of the town meeting?
People already got their names on here, Jesus.
Yeah, I, I, I put my name down, um.
That was really quick.
Yeah.
We can get, we can get rid of this, we don't need that anymore.
I'll, I'll, I'll add some extra signs, just so that people can, um, put them on.
Those things just stay there, because that's, that's an important notice. It should, it should be notice board, but I'm leaving it, because also the signs are.
Okay, no fish.
Maggie, is he, Maggie, you're a bee hybrid, right? Yes.
She nods.
Yes, she nods.
It's really cute.
And, is she a deer? I forget.
Yeah, deer hybrid. Look at my antlers.
How many humans do we actually have? We don't have that many.
I, I'm.
I worked very hard.
I have no idea what I am.
Utopia's done that far off.
I'm depressed.
Someone write the name down before I forget it. Can someone put the name on here? I ha- I literally have the memory of a goldfish. Someone can put the name on there. The name of the town.
Oh, it's, it was like time shift or something.
Yeah, we, we, we both, bunny hybrids.
Bunny hybrids, oh, I love it, I love it!
Aw.
So cute!
Cute hybrids. I know we have obviously a cat, we have a deer, a bee, we have more, but I forget.
I'm a piglin.
Who's a piglin?
Piglin hybrid.
You're a piglin hybrid? I didn't even know that. I thought you were a human.
But I gave him like, I gave him my character like, like for four years, though, like, like a.
Oh yeah, oh yeah, yeah, I see, I see. Right, so we got, we got quite a few hybrids going then. So we've got what? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. And we half, and we half of the people here are hybr- are not hybrids.
I'm a human-human hybrid, um.
Oh, that's so rare!
I'm a cat, cat hybrid.
I'm hu- human something, I have no idea. Probably some sort of elven, I'm not sure.
Let me read what Maggie just said. Is anyone low-key panicking? Oh no, it's okay, Maggie, we've got this, we've got everyone else, at least you're not alone. We've got everyone.
We're all.
Yeah.
We're all in the same situation, so it's a, that's a good thing.
Look, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm sure we'll find out, like, what happened, I don't know, I mean.
It's okay, but for now, we got like, we got.
But, yeah, I mean, you know, you, you all seem, you all seem nice, and I, I think, you know, whatever happens, I, I know, we're all.
Wait, all of Iden's a hybrid? Yeah, at least we're not alone, you know, we've got every, we've got like chugger. Human and then a hybrid, that's a cool hybrid. Yeah, we've got chugger, then that's nice, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I am not a hybrid. I am a normal, I am a normal human. Anyway, so the people still here, the people still in the, uh, town meeting. You guys get the, uh, get the privilege of making this first decision. We're gonna make another board, a fast one. Why are they still here? It's morning. This is for builds you want doing, so if you want a, do a big community build.
I'm still stuck.
Or if you're not a big one, you just need help with the build, put it on this board, and people will read it, and then they will come and help you. So, you guys get the privilege, who are still here, of putting your ideas down on here first. So, whatever you want to be in the community.
I don't have wood.
This is like builds for every, everyone. So whatever build you want in the community, whether that be a farm, a church, big beehive, yeah?
Uh, who doesn't have food? I have my steak here. Who doesn't have food?
I think, I think, uh, task number one for a community build needs to be this one right here.
No, no, I know, I think, I think task number one needs to be big beehive.
With a B above it.
With a B above it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, if you guys wanna get all the colored clay slash wool for that.
Um, yeah, okay.
Big panic room. Whoever put that? Mood.
Maybe, I did, I put, I put.
I agree, and panic room is definite, a definite, yeah.
Like, I can, I can do it right now.
Alright, this is getting used a lot more than I thought it would be. What's this one? Yeah, big panic room, that's been, they should, Ray's literally run off and gone, I can do that right now. Yeah.
I, I'll, I'll.
Prime church is the sn- can we make it the by-church of prime? I feel like that works. I feel like the by-church of prime works well.
Yeah, yeah, that'll be good, yeah.
Bar slash racetrack, ooh.
Ow!
A museum slash adoption center.
Who just hit me?
I mean, yeah, I would like to be adopted.
Oh, you're doing Adopt Me Now, we're in roadblocks.
On the, on the billboard, little Tesco's, and a divorce called.
Can we, can we put, uh, identity fox in jail? He keeps, they keep it in me, like.
Iden, Iden, this is, this is holy ground, no hitting people on the holy ground. This is actually the holy ground, the holy ground will be over there. What was that? Do you need ears? Greg's, oh my god, we need a Greg's, that's so important. We need a Greg's. How can we make sausage rolls, though? That's the important part.
Um.
Just sell bread, just sell bread.
Yeah, yeah.
Camping ground, I like that, yeah?
Can I please stop being killed? Please!
Just gonna recheck everyone who wants to be on the council.
Why was I killed? I keep being killed, like, who the hell does that?
Alec, why have you put your name in so many different ways?
I, I thought if I put more names, I might have a higher chance.
Okay, okay, that makes sense.
So, so, so you'd think they're different people, and then realise, you know, that I'm the same.
I did think they were different people until I double-checked it. Look what you did, Alec, now everyone's changing their names.
Jeez.
What the hell's happening here?
We don't know.
Uh, Alec is giving all the reasons that he shouldn't be on the council.
Oh my god.
And the best starts with friend of Wilbersol.
No, no, oh!
The seats are at the town council table, I feel like that's an important part of my decision.
Being hit, bro.
Uh, I think it's about six.
We can make eight.
I don't have a spawn point, stop killing me.
Um.
Eight, nah, six'll, six'll do it, actually, six'll do it.
Yes, I agree with this side, I agree with this side of the, of the pool.
Wait, is it in the back?
No, good. Come, come round here, come round here.
Well, thank you, I mean, it's a, who's writing all these signs? I don't know, I don't know.
Two seconds.
I have no idea.
Okay.
I didn't notice before.
This is the list of who's on, by the way, because I made the decision.
It's already decided who is gonna be on the town council?
Yeah, I did it quickly, the voice is in my head while I do.
Oh, wow. Yay, I can't believe I'm the number one spot on the council.
I need to, I need to double-check with someone. There's currently seven people, but I need to put, double-check with someone.
Why did somebody hit me? It's a, it's, nobody hit it better, please.
Okay, guys, if, if you want this place to be secure for mobs, why did you leave the fence gates open?
Uh, because, uh, there is no peace anymore.
Wait.
We, we do not believe in peace on the legacy SMP.
No, I thought, I, I, I thought I'd missed someone, but I need to double-check with them, so that's everyone for now. And then, I think I might have one more.
Wow.
Next, 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 nice, nice.
When, 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 when will the first meeting be?
Uh, whenever I can not be at work. Maybe tomorrow.
It's the community house, please! You're being attacked by fentanyl on side.
Look, I'm, I don't care, you think I care? No, I, I'm fine, I'm fine.
It's official, it's on the notice board.
Oh my lord.
Hey! Ray!
They, they did it to me three times where anyone said anything, they did it three times. It would be three times, no one's scared.
Looks like we're gonna need that courthouse a bit quicker than we were expecting.
Yeah.
So, this is now the courthouse for, for, until we can build a courthouse.
Uh, I will put that task, task on, uh, on me, to build a courthouse.
Okay, this is the courthouse until we can build a courthouse. Ray, no more. Iden, Ray, Ray, Iden, let's behave, please. No, that's outside of the holy land, so do as you please, I don't care.
Please don't hit each other.
They're fighting outside of the holy land, so it's fine.
Ah.
Uh, there is a lot of reapers outside, I just, who's punch each other? This is the holiest of holy lands here. So far, until the church is built.
Think you're above the lava, Alec.
I'm on three hearts, I'm gonna die.
He's like, I'm on the town council, behave, right, okay.
Either of them are here.
They're outside fighting, I've been watching them fight through the windows. Wait, members of the jury come and sit.
Truce, 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 I'll get it back, I'll get it.
Pick a death pit and throw you both down it, alright? All your stuff on you.
Look at that.
Don't care.
Sad, do you have a, a free trapdoor to put their stuff in?
Wasn't me, no, no, wasn't me, um.
I watched you do it.
It says in the chat.
Uh, no, 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 that, that, look, I, I don't have the stuff, it was, it was, it was paradox, paradox picked it all up, it wasn't me.
There's some man outside.
Go, you, go, go, attacking one of my bots, hey, hey!
Someone dropped all their stuff, and it all landed in my inventory, I have a bunch of it.
Yeah, Alec killed me.
I was being attacked.
You were not.
I'll put it there.
Oh my.
Oh!
Okay, who it, no, not my stuff, it's again.
Watch out for the hole, Iden.
Wait, no, no, behind you, behind you, watch out, watch out.
I did it on purpose, so that someone's shit would get blown up.
Watch out for the hole, okay?
Did anyone see that?
Watch out for the hole! It, it's called a death hole for a reason, just.
Can I please have my, I'm all the way, you're gonna drop before you get to the top, you're gonna drop.
Why do we have a death hole?
Uh, because like, I, yeah, I minded, uh, in half an hour. We can use it as a very secure.
No, you're so cool.
This is a very.
I'm, I'm starting to build a courthouse, don't worry.
When people get infected, we just drop them down the death hole.
Yeah.
I feel like.
I have, I am. I will be making one bigger after the stream.
Yeah, I think, when you make a bigger one, I think what you should do is you should make like.
Yeah, like, after the stream, because I don't have enough stuff, man.
Cause we have about five million books after gliding through them at people. So, I think you should make like voting booths, where people put, um. Say, they go in the booth, they write their book, and they do guilty or not guilty, and then they give it to you. Or they could do signs, signs would work, and they stick it in the booth.
Well, here, here's the, here, I, I will, I will build that, um, but I have right now not, not much time, since everybody was screaming.
What, what, who was supposed to be the one?
Uh, Ray and Iden.
Ray and Iden. Okay, where's Iden? I, I, you have to come down.
Probably hate everything else.
I, I'm, I'm, you have to come down, can't, you can't stay up there forever.
The death hole isn't that bad. I died in it, I promise. It's not, it's not as bad as it seems. I know it's called the death hole, but it's really not that bad.
Iden can stay up there, I don't belong on the ground anymore. I don't get to be on the ground.
That is, yeah, okay. I mean, you can build a whole sky pixel if you really want.
Wait, is Iden the one getting sued, or is Iden the one suing?
One being sued.
Iden was, Iden was beaten.